Gwinnett Township. Okay, let's start again. Welcome to the Lower Gwinnett Township Board of Supervisors meeting for June the 22nd, 2021. Please all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag.
United States of America.
To the Republic of Georgia. One nation.
One nation.
Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'm just letting everybody know, this tonight's board meeting is being video recorded. Carol, did you make a note that the board was in executive session on a real estate matter before this meeting? Thank you. First up on the agenda is the receipt of the minutes from May 11th and May 25th, 2021. Is there any questions from the supervisors? Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a second.
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 All those in favor say aye.
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 Next up is the receipt of inventory history from April and May 2021. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Next up is the year-to-date budget report and balance sheet from March and April. Are there any questions from the supervisors?
These, these aren't ready, Mr. Chairman. They were not, not ready to be broadcast, I guess.
Okay, we'll take it for the next meeting. Next up, building and zoning. Craig, could you walk us through this, please?
I'm gonna refer to Neil Stein on this. This is basically a transfer of financial responsibilities for a new owner of a recently subdivided piece of land.
That's exactly what it is. The original owner has sold the property and has arranged with the buyer to take an assignment of the original owner's obligations under the land development agreement, the stormwater agreement. And the new owner will be posting or substituting escrow for the existing escrow that's already in place with a new letter of credit. And as requested that the township consent to this assignment.
Okay, so I need a motion.
So moved.
Have a second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next up, Resolution 2021-13, application for the state capital budget redevelopment funding authority for the North Penn Volunteer Fire Company improvements. Craig?
Yeah, this is a just a resolution, just saying that the Lower Gwinnett Township will be the grantee for this RACB grant, which is going to be used towards the North Penn Volunteer Fire Company's updates to their firehouse that we've talked about in the past.
Yes, for, for those of you in the meeting who don't know, the North Penn Volunteer Fire Company received a $1 million grant from the state. And they came to the township looking for a matching component of approximately $400,000. And we've agreed to provide that. I can't say enough good things about our volunteer fire company. They serve the western part of the township very well, about a third of the township. And I want to emphasize, these are all volunteers. And they spend not less than 100 hours, and I would say probably more, of their own time just in training. So they're a great group of people, and we really appreciate everything that they've done for us. So, okay, so.
So do I have a? I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. I just clarified, this has been updated to request the annual review and reapproval, correct?
Yes, I updated it to include that language. It's at the bottom of page one.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any questions from supervisors?
I don't have a question, but I'd like to add a comment for the record. The residents of Lower Gwinnett do not, I, I shouldn't say all residents do not. Majority of the residents do not understand how blessed we are with North Penn Fire Company and Wissahicken to serve our community, our township, through volunteer fire service. The, the monies that they save this township with volunteerism, as they do, is just incredible. And with that said, this, this is, this funding for their redevelopment should be sponsored by Lower Gwinnett, as the motion does call for. So I just, for the record, I want to pass that on.
Okay, are there any questions from supervisors about this? Are there any questions from the public concerning this resolution?
Anyone can raise their hand on the bottom of their screen. They can hit, raise hand. I don't see anything, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, can I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes. Next up is the annual contribution of the Community Ambulance Association of Ambler. Craig?
Yes, in the past, we, the, the board has contributed $15,000 per year to the Community Ambulance Association. This past December, we had a meeting with Jen Sweeney, the business director at Community Ambulance. I don't see her on the call right now, but, and the request was for, to up, upgrade to a $30,000 contribution, which the board approved back in December 8th, 2020. So tonight, just looking for authorization to send the 2021 contribution in the amount, the total amount. We also have one payment left on the radios of $3,896. That'll be the final payment, final five payments. Total amount of the check is $33,896 to the Community Ambulance Association of Ambler.
Okay. They're a great organization. A number of their members I know also work for other volunteer organizations in our community. They're well deserving of this. Are there any comments from the supervisors?
Dudo.
Okay. Are there any comments from the members of the public?
I'm not seeing anything, Mr. Chairman. If I could just add one thing, that the director informed me today that she has put in her resignation from the Community Ambulance, Jen Sweeney. So she will be leaving that organization on July 7th, I believe, is her last day.
That's a shame. She was doing a good job. I hope, I hope they find somebody else as talented as she is. Okay, I need a motion.
So moved.
So moved.
Okay, I'll take that as a second. Tessie, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Next up, acceptance of a proposal by McMahon and Associates in the design of the crosswalk. Is Chad here? Yes, he is. Chad, can you talk to us? Chad, for those on the, on the meeting here, is our traffic engineer. And could you talk to us, talk us through this, Chad?
Sure. Good evening. Back in the spring, the township submitted an application to the Montgomery County Planning Commission for their 2040 implementation grant program to improve the existing Penland Trail crossing on Dagger Road. To improve the crossing, including providing flashing warning devices at the, at the trail crossing. The township received notification at the end of May that it was one of the projects chosen for this round of the 2040 program. There's some paperwork that staff will need to complete in terms of an agreement with the county for the project. One of the things now that we need to do, since we've received notification, the word is to start the design and permitting process with PennDOT. So we have a proposal in front of you tonight. Includes topographic survey, the final design of the flashing warning device and permitting with PennDOT, construction plan and bid documents, and services during construction. We anticipate the project schedule, once we start, to take approximately a year. And a lot of that is driven on the construction. And because once we put the project out to bid, it does take a considerable amount of time to get steel mast arms for the flashing warning devices. That can take several months in order sometimes. So seems a little bit longer than what, what you may think for the scope of the project. But that's what contributes to that 12-month schedule. So we're asking for, for approval this evening to get that process started for township.
Okay. Thank you, Chad, for that. For those of you that, on the call that may not know, Dagger Road right there is a very busy road. And there, that path that parallels it is, is a high-use path. And there's, there's no signalization right there at all. There's no crosswalk there. It's a, you know, it's, 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 it's a problem area. I don't think we've had any, but I don't think we've had anybody, pedestrians, hit there, but I don't think we should wait either. It was a, it was a low-hanging fruit, fruit type of project. I think there were a couple of recommendations. I think Deb Schaefer was one of the ones that also recommended this one and another crossing. But at any rate, are there, I think it's a great project. And I'm gonna ask any of the supervisors if they've got any questions.
I don't have any questions, but I'd just like to make the comment to second what you just said, Mark. And that is, traveling that road very often, almost daily myself, I have seen a number of times where pedestrians have wanted to come across from one end to the other. And it's been scary a couple of times with cars speeding as they do on Dagger Road and a number of township roads. So this is without a doubt necessary to prevent a major catastrophe.
Thank you, Mr. Brand. Any more comments or questions from the other supervisors? No. Are there any comments from members of the public?
Yes, we have one. Deborah Schaefer.
Very good. Hi, Deborah.
Hi, good evening. I want to say thank you to whoever pursued this, this grant. And I really look forward to my daily runs being a whole lot safer after the crosswalk is, is added to. So thank you very much.
You're welcome, Deborah. Thank you for this suggestion as well. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next up, authorization to bid Welsh Road walking path. Greg?
Yes, we've recently placed a pedestrian bridge, and a map just popped up, pedestrian bridge on Welsh Road. And during the first phase of it, we, we put out to bid for the pedestrian bridge and a walking path from Landfair to Lloyd Roads. And we received several, 12 bids for that. The lowest bid for the walking path was $113,000, and the highest was $218,000. We have adjusted the scope of the work on that, that path, and we believe we will be able to get a, a lower price on that to install a path when we're just working with either a paving company or a concrete company. So we'd like to pursue going out to bid again and seeing what kind of numbers we get at this time. At $113,000, we, we didn't think it was exactly the right number that we were assuming for that, that path. It's about 800 feet of, of, of walking path. It's on a very level grade. So we think we can do better, and we'd just like to pursue that. If it comes in high again, we can always just remove the bid altogether, so.
What's a ballpark acceptable number that you're looking for? You know, you or Jim can answer that.
Well, Jim, you, you might be more realistic. I mean, I'm, I'm hoping for about $50,000, but.
Okay. Yeah, I would say between 50 and 75 would be something I would think is acceptable. There, it's not just the path, because it was along the PennDOT road, we had to do some drainage improvements. So there are yard drains and a drainage pipe underneath the ground that'll help out drainage along there. But it was something PennDOT required as part of the permitting, drives up the cost.
How safe is that going to be, walking along that busy road? Is there gonna be some kind of a?
Yeah, so there's no curbing, there's no curbing along the road. So a PennDOT requires that the closest edge of the sidewalk be at least five feet from the, from the shoulder. So there'll be a five-foot grass strip and then the walking path. So much safer condition than walking on the shoulder, for sure.
That sounds great.
And for those on the call that don't know, this bridge forges a small stream that, that I believe goes into the different watershed. What was the name of that watershed?
Little, Little Nishamani Creek watershed.
Yeah, Nishamani Creek. So, and it's, it's a small creek, but when you get there, it, it posed a major obstacle for people trying to get out from that, the, the development that's in the corner of Tennis in 63 there. So it took us a number of years to get the bridge in. The bridge is now open. People can use it. And I'd like to thank Jim from, Jim Hirsch from Gilmore. They did a great job. I've been over there. I've looked at the bridge. It's not going anywhere for decades and decades. Just what we, we want. It's a very safe bridge. So we appreciate all the help. Jim, that you gave us putting into that bridge. It took a while, but it, we've gotten a good result. Are there any questions from the supervisors? Are there any questions from members of the public?
I'm not, I'm not seeing anything, Mr. Chairman.
Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, next up is park survey. Craig, could you fill us in?
The Parker Rec Board had a subcommittee of the Parker Rec Board to put together a survey. I think it's been a few months now, and they have, what they think have the final survey ready to distribute to people in the residents of the Lower Gwinnett Township. And they're just looking for authorization to approve the distribution of that survey.
Okay. All right. Are there any questions from members of the board?
No, I think this is a very nice survey, and the committee worked very hard on it. And it's been vetted by even a professional. So I think it's in good shape. And I'm, I'm very excited to get the results back from this survey. This'll help us understand what the township residents desire in terms of park and rec. So I congratulate the, the two people most responsible for working on this, Kathy and Sandy.
That's great. Just so you know, everybody on the call, Tessie and Danielle are on parks and recs. So we're divided up into subcommittees, and this is just part of our open communications plan. And I think it's, I think it's coming along nicely. Thank you. Any questions from the public?
I don't have a question, but I just want to say, this is Joan Zeller. And I'm, I'm, I'm really excited to, to he, to see the next inquiry into the general public. I was, I was really thrilled, you know, last year, the year before, whenever it was. It was my first experience with governments reaching out to the public to say, how can we talk to you? And it was great. So I just want to say that. I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next up, authorization to purchase a John Deere backhoe. And I see Fred on here. I thought I saw Fred.
Yes.
Fred? Fred's our roads director here.
All right. Yeah, we are looking to purchase a new John Deere backhoe to replace our older Case backhoe, which unfortunately isn't in very good shape. Rust is its enemy. So the John Deere is compatible with the other backhoe we own, so the attachments and all are interchangeable. The wheels and tires are interchangeable. So it's standardizing our backhoes, and we do need it. As, I don't think the Case is gonna make it through another winter.
That's a good reason. I think we need a backhoe, don't we?
Yes, we have used backhoes quite a bit.
And how much can we expect to spend on that backhoe?
I think the price was 116?
116,900. We budgeted 120,000 in 2021 for that.
That's good news, Craig. We're gonna come in slightly under budget. Are there any questions from the supervisors?
Nope.
Okay, any questions from members of the public?
I'm not seeing anything, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, can I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Next up is a bid for resurfacing a court at Penland Park. Craig?
Hello, refer to Jim Hirsch on this one. Jim?
Thanks, Craig. So this project is to resurface the courts at Penland Park. Currently, there is one full, one full-court basketball court, a half-court basketball court, and a tennis court that's also striped for pickleball. In addition to resurfacing the pavement, which is about, I think, 25 years old at, at this point, and then showing signs of wear and tear, the project would also extend a portion of the courts and paving so that you could have two full-court basketball courts. And then also new backboards. And, and the tennis court, there were a couple of different options. And I think Craig can weigh in on this, but still gonna want a recommendation from the Park and Rec Board on what the final outcome is over there. But we opened the bids, and the low bidder is Topa Court LLC. We have worked with Topa Court on a number of other projects extremely similar to this in other municipalities. Two of the, two of the examples were in Horsham and Montgomery Township, which I gave to the board earlier in the year to, to take a look at. We feel confident that Topa Court can do the work. And the recommendation would be to award them the base bid, option A court overlay, and court layout option three, which is four pickleball courts along with nets on the tennis court in the amount of $225,038. I will say that if you choose, if you would choose some other type of layout for the tennis court, the, the price would be slightly cheaper, potentially like $221,000, but they're, they're very close. So I'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
So Jim, we've had a lot of issues with the, with the courts. So what kind of life expectancy could we anticipate for the court?
I would say that you're looking at another 15 to 20 years, something like that. Same as you would if you build it from scratch.
Okay, are we concerned, or are, are you concerned about groundwater?
I'm not, I'm not concerned about groundwater. I actually think, after looking, after going out there and looking at it, I think the cracks are along paving seams, and it just, they pull apart over time. I don't see the alligator cracking that we, we see in roads where there's base failure and you have groundwater issues. So the overlay is actually building up on top of what you, what you already have there, which is a pretty solid foundation. And when we had the contractors out there for the pre-bid meeting, Topa Court agreed with our assessment that the stone dust overlay was the best option here.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Is there any questions from members of the Board of Supervisors?
I just, I'm sorry, Danielle, go ahead.
No, you can go ahead.
I just wanted to clarify that we are not voting on the option pickleball versus tennis court. We're voting simply on the resurfacing.
Yeah, you would be voting to award the contract to Topa Court. And then the park and, I mean, my understanding is the Park and Recreation Board would give the Board of Supervisors a recommendation for what they think the striping should be.
Thank you.
What's up, Danielle?
That was my primary question. I wanted to ensure that we weren't voting right now on how to stripe the court. I think the second question I had is, Jim, were you involved, I guess, when the last time it was repaved? Is, what are we doing differently? And how are we going to ensure that we don't face the same challenges that we're facing now?
So I wasn't involved the last time it was repaved. My understanding is that there were some cracks likely along the paving seams, like we, we talked about. And the, I think, Public, Craig, I mean, did Public Works do the work?
They attempted to do the work originally, and they did a
So what happened?
A really bad Band-Aid.
Yeah, so what they did essentially was, they saw cut down the seams where the cracks were, and then they repaved. But essentially what happened was, instead of having one seam crack later, you had, you had two, each of the saw cut joints. This is gonna be completely different than that, because there's gonna be one continuous surface across the entire, all, all the courts. So there won't be cracks or seams to, to open up.
Okay, so no matter how we decide to, to stripe it moving forward, this will ensure that the surface is unified throughout, regardless if it's basketball, if it's tennis, if it's pickleball, or some combination of the both.
Yeah, yeah. The only re, the only reason the price changes with the striping is, well, a little bit more of the painted lines, but more so it's, it's the nets themselves, like with the four pickleball courts. The price is to put the actual physical nets in there.
But that's not happening at this point, right?
Not unless the Park and Recreation Board recommends that, and then the Board of Supervisors decide to move that way.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Are there any questions from members of the public?
I'm not seeing anything. So just to, so this'll just get us on the schedule for Topa Court at this time. We're not telling them anything about how many tennis courts or how many pickleball courts are gonna be out there. But this'll at least give them the opportunity to put us on the schedule.
What, what's the amount of downtime? What's the length of time it takes for it to be completed? And when do they anticipate beginning?
So we decide, after talking with Craig, we just, we kind of came to the realization that the park's gonna have to be closed for a certain portion of the summer. And the reason for that is that the paving has to go down when it's warm. And then even more importantly, the acrylic paint at the end of this whole deal has to go down when the temperature is at least 50 degrees and rising. So Topa Court told me that they only really like to paint until like the middle of October, so they can ensure that, that, that works out. So I think what we're looking at now is closing probably the second half of August until the middle of October.
Is there, is there any way to ensure that it happens after the kids go back to school, like around the 31st?
I can talk to Topa Court about that. The only thing that I worried i, is that like, if the project goes any longer than anticipated, then If the project goes any longer than anticipated, then they wouldn't be able to paint it this year. Which you'd go the whole winter and you'd fall in spring essentially without it being painted.
Okay.
We were, we were looking at that and trying to figure that out. We were trying to do it. Well, we were thinking maybe we would have it before the school ended, but we didn't have that opportunity. So yeah, the only problem would be having striping on the basketball and tennis courts throughout the winter and. I don't know. I think. We'll try, we'll try.
Thank you.
Okay, and there's, is there any, any comments from the public?
I'm not seeing anything, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, motion passes. Next up, Milling. Jim Hirsch. You're up, you're on deck. Talk to us about the building.
Thanks, Mark. So the milling and paving contract is complete and. We have in front of you is an application for payment and a change order. The change order reflects actual amounts of material placed in the field, so. There were slightly less amount of base repair. Then we had a budgeted, so you know, that brought the cost down, but then. We added two additional ADA ramps on Warren Road. So reconstruct those and bring them up to current ADA standards. So that brought the price up. So what you have is a net increase in the contract of two thousand three hundred and eighty eight dollars and ninety cents. So we would recommend that change order and then payment to. Innovative Asphalt Solutions in the amount of one eighty three, three twenty seven and five cents.
Okay. Are there any questions from supervisors? Are there any questions from the public?
I'm not seeing anything, Mr. Chairman.
Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a second.
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 All those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, next up is our solicitor. There's some rule changes around public meetings. Neil, could you please opine?
Sure, Mr. Gray. Act fifteen of two thousand and twenty was the statutory authority for conducting virtual meetings. That authority was only effective as long as the governor's proclamation of disaster emergency for the pandemic was in place. That proclamation or declaration is no longer in place. Therefore, Act fifteen of two thousand and twenty is no longer in effect and therefore. Government agencies do not have the statutory authority to conduct virtual meetings anymore. Now. I have seen some legislators talk about introducing legislation to. Allow virtual meetings going forward. I have not seen anything introduced with regard to second class townships. So therefore. If you wanted to have a virtual meetings, you can no longer do so under statutory authority. The best you could do or an alternative that you could do would be hybrid meetings whereby the public. Could participate if you had the technology either virtually or in person. But a quorum of the board would have to be present in person.
In person, and this applies to all the other committees zoning, for example.
It does. It does.
So we're back in business as of July first? Is that the recommended date?
It's whenever the next public meeting would be.
Okay, okay, Craig, I know that may pose a. Conundrum from some committees, but we've got to comply. So could you let the, all the committees know and inform them in-person meetings are now required?
Yes, I can, Mr. Chairman.
So Chairman, can I ask a question?
Please go ahead.
Neil, so we're allowed to continue as long as a quorum of the board is in person. How does that work for committees? And then I guess the second question. I have is without legislative authority, can we establish procedures? In the event of emergency to allow a virtual meeting?
There's no statutory authority for coming up with your own procedure for what to do. The Sunshine Act requires public meetings. It requires that a quorum of the board be present. As long as a quorum of the board is present, it wouldn't be a problem if one or two supervisors, for whatever reason. Had to call in or participate virtually. However, the statutory authority for creating a different procedure doesn't exist anymore. Not without legislative help.
And so for committees. They just have to be in person. They can't do in hybrid. I'm assuming they don't have the sunshine law restrictions or they can't, they don't need a quorum.
No, any committee falls within the definition of government agency and all government agencies are treated the same. Which means they have to have a quorum in person. The public can participate virtually if they so desire. But the committee itself has to have a quorum in person.
So our vote last month regarding continuing throughout the summer virtually is basically nullified.
Yeah, since then, there's been, as you probably know, the constitutional amendment. Became effective because the vote from the primary was ratified by the governor. So that changed everything.
Gotcha. Thank you.
So the committees that are, who are talking about are the ones that. We have published dates for, in other words, the Planning Commission. Zoning Hearing Board. Park and Recs and EAC. Are we also including the subcommittees? In this as well, like the building and zoning?
I think it's any, any public meeting.
Right, any public.
Okay, so the four that I just clicked off.
Correct.
That's correct.
Okay.
Are there, are there any more questions from supervisors?
Yes, so. Maybe I'm missing this. Is there a way for us to continue allowing the public to join in by Zoom?
We established.
You have that option if you have the technology. To do that.
And we do. I guess it's just the.
Everybody seems to have it.
Well, I, I think staff could certainly. Broadcast our Board of Supervisors meetings. I don't think we have the staff to broadcast. Or monitor all the other meetings.
Board of Supervisors, we can, we certainly can do the Board of Supervisors with the, we, as. Actually, no one has seen, but the, the meeting room has been updated with the technology that everyone approved. A long time ago, but during COVID, we upgraded the, the meeting room. So we have the technology now to. To have. The public participate. The virtual and we could be in the meeting room.
So it's beyond streaming and allow true participation, kind of similar to Zoom, is what you're saying, Craig?
Yes, we were. We, we worked, we tried it and it, it works. So would it be like this? I mean, many municipalities have a requirement to have your, your, any questions in by. Noon that day or three o'clock that day or whatever, but. We think we can still do it as a Zoom meeting similar to this. We would be in the meeting room. With the public on Zoom.
So do we need a motion to authorize this, Neil?
No, you don't need a motion.
So, so Craig or maybe Jamie, so like EAC or Parks and Rec, would a staff member have to be present?
Yes.
Yeah, so that's, that's the constraint.
Right, we can, we can facilitate it for the Board of Supervisors meeting, given the staff, but for the other. Meetings, we, you know, we, we wouldn't be able to.
Yeah, you mean you don't want to work five nights a week as well as the days, right? Yeah, for those that you, that don't know, there are a tremendous number of meetings. They're just tremendous and some are public and some are not and staff has to be at many of them. So it's a. You know, it's, it's quite a burden, right? So.
We can decide just to project the Board of Supervisors, right? We, we don't have to do all the meetings.
Correct.
I guess the only concern that I have or the reason why I was concerned about planning and building and zoning is oftentimes they're at a timer, a lot of, not a lot of people are able to participate. So would they be able to at minimum be streamed?
Not without a staff member being there, yeah.
So with, so with zoning, I know is its own entity, but with, with planning, at least their staff already planning to be at the majority of those meetings, correct?
Yes.
So planning theoretically could move forward and then I guess the only issue is zoning if there is somebody that understands how to wield the equipment?
There's not.
There, there, there would have to be a training for both the Planning Commission. Zoning Hearing Board, unless one of the. Committee members on the zoning hearing board wants to learn how to. Manage a Zoom meeting. There is no staff that goes there.
Okay.
There is, I mean, the, the equipment in the room can do. It can do live streaming, but that is a whole different.
Yeah.
You know, that's a whole different, not that you guys would have to decide whether or not that's a policy you want to implement and you'd have to have the. Requirement, you know, that you would, would want and, and it doesn't have the two-way communication. So they, like, while we're sitting on Zoom, you can, someone can raise their hand and participate in this meeting. That participation element, which is part of the reason why the meetings have to be held in a public place. Is lost when, when you're streaming it. It doesn't, it doesn't satisfy that requirement for public participation unless you implement something where someone can. Submit comments prior to a meeting.
Okay.
Okay, are there any questions from members of the public?
Yep, I have one. Mark Schaefer.
Yeah, so, hi, so of course I've just now sent out an email to the EAC saying we're, we're going to meet. Back at the, back at the ranch on the fourteenth, but if, for instance, I'm just asking a question. I know there's an internet connection. If I set up my laptop with a Zoom and just aim the camera at the group. Could we try that so that people could zoom in and at least watch what we're doing without. Figuring out all the streaming equipment that's in them, because we usually don't meet in the main room anyway. We meet in the boardroom. Would that, is that something we could try?
Certainly, I don't know if everyone's going to be able to hear you.
Okay.
But you can certainly try that.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll give it a shot and let you know how it works out. Okay.
So I, I would like for us, when we announce the next meeting. To include from going forward, which meetings we can Zoom. And which meetings we would just live stream so that the public knows that going forward.
Do we, do we plan on doing?
We don't, there is no live stream. So we would only be doing the Board of Supervisors via Zoom. We would be in person.
Okay, I misunderstood what Jamie was saying then. I thought she said we could live stream.
I, I said that the capability of live streaming is in there, but that the township, like the board would have to come up with a policy and their own procedures for live streaming because. As I was saying, I was explaining that it's no longer a two-way, like people can't communicate and participate in your meeting. Because it's live streamed, they can just watch it, but they can't participate. But that's still required. We, we don't currently have the staff to be there and live stream all of the different meetings that occur. It's still, same procedure has to be, you know, undertaken as it would if you were just, if you were also offering a Zoom option.
Okay, I, I got it. Thank you. Well, in that case, I think we should move forward with at least the Zoom op, option. Put it in place for the Board of Supervisors because I think it's important and increases the participation.
I have another hand raised here. Deborah Schaefer.
Hi again. I want to thank everybody for the effort to make the meetings as inclusive as possible. And I hope that in the weekly newsletters that go out via email, that you will include the information that. The Board of Supervisors will be meeting in person, but they. But the public will be able to, to attend the meeting on Zoom. I think that's really important for our residents to know that.
Yep, we will put that in the, the next e-newsletter, which is monthly now, not weekly anymore. We, they changed to monthly and that will be going out shortly for the, the second e-newsletter of the. But yes, we will include that in the, the meeting or in, in the newsletter.
Thank you.
Thanks, Deborah.
Craig, is there any more? Anybody else raising their hand?
I do not see any, anything else.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to make a comment if I could, Mark.
Sure, Mr. Brett.
I'd like the staff to. Contact our, our three major retirement communities to see down the line, one and if. They can have the availability of at least seeing and hearing. The lower Gwinnett Supervisors meeting. In a live stream, at least in their auditoriums or so forth. I think. You'd get a favorable response from the seniors that live in those facilities. And I, I just want to make that comment to the staff. I don't know. If that could be possible in the future, but I'd like the staff to be aware of my request.
We could reach out. I mean, they could do the same thing everyone else in here is doing, so, but we'll reach out, let them know.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Ed. Any more questions? Good. Next up, I'm going to exercise a little of my chairman's prerogative. I've asked Neil to comment on flags. Now, those of you that weren't on the meeting last month, we had a request to raise the LGBTQ plus flag in the township. So I've asked for legal advice from our township solicitor, Neil.
The answer is simple. The township can elect to fly that flag or elect not to fly that flag. It's. A township flagpole and township property and you can use it for whatever purpose you deem appropriate. Now, if you. Elect to raise the flag this one time, it's my opinion that it's not all of a sudden going to convert. Township prop, the township building or the township flagpole. To an open public forum such that you'd never be able to deny anyone else the privilege of electing a third party flag. However, if it's going to become a regular practice, we'd want to take a closer look at some guidelines and policies under which you can do that. So that third parties who may be interested in displaying. Offensive content would not be able to challenge the township's decision-making to deny them the authority to do so. I tried to simplify about, you know, a hundred years of First Amendment litigation in a short period of time.
You did a good job.
That gives you a flavor of what the township can and cannot do.
Okay, thank you. I know there's been some discussion on this. I've given it a great deal of thought, so. I'm opening the floor up to other supervisors for their comments or thoughts.
Well, I, I'd like to start being the elder statesman. I am not in favor of adding any additional flags other than the United States flag. The state flag and our township flag. Once we start flying different colors for different reasons. Every month, our Public Works Department, the township would be getting different flags on a once a month basis. And I am adamant at that and. That's all I have to say.
And uh, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Ed. Any more comments?
Yeah, I I'd like to add, um are we? Okay, so in terms of flying additional flags, in particular, the rainbow flag. Um, it's my opinion that the American flag suffices in terms of inclusivity. Um, you you don't have a more inclusive flag than the American flag, we are all Americans. And in addition to the other flags that we have flying in Veterans Park, we're all Pennsylvanians and we're all the Gwinnett Township. Residents, I believe raising any other flag, whatever it may be, is not really inclusive, it's exclusive. And I I feel that the American flag suffices to fulfill what we we need to do as supervisors to um. Emphasize our commonality, not our differences. So I am not in favor of flying any other flag other than the American flag and the state and the township flag that's at Veterans Park.
Thank you, Kath. Any more comments?
Yes.
I have some comments.
Oh.
Um, I think being that this is Pride Month and we need to recognize the resilience and the determination of the many individuals who are fighting to live freely. And authentically, and in doing so, we're opening up our hearts and our minds and laying the foundation for a more unjust community. And an equitable community and ultimately, you know, an equitable nation. So I I'm the person that made the recommendation that we consider the logistics around flying the LGBT pride flag. And I would recommend that we do consider, not consider, that we approve flying the pride flag this month.
Thank you, Danielle. Tessie, any thoughts?
Y- yes, um I I would agree with Danielle, I'm I'm um I'm not opposed uh to putting it on another flag pole. Uh, if that would um smooth the way. But uh, you know, having a a child who is in the LGBT community, I'm fully supportive. Of uh recognizing uh past discrimination and ongoing uh difficulties. This uh group of people have and it's not like uh we're not all Americans, I you know, I agree with that statement. But I think that there are certain times in our history when we need to celebrate and recognize. Uh, and give legitimacy to groups of people. Uh, by the reasoning that um, you know, was just expressed, we wouldn't maybe wouldn't even fly the. POW MIA flag because, well, those individuals were not Americans or or some. Uh rationale, but um, you know, what what is uh hurtful about flying a flag to support people? Uh, during this uh day and age and uh I'm I'm fully supportive of of putting up another flag pole. And uh, using it to support this group of people and in future. There may be additional reasons to fly other flags, so uh I I would be very supportive of that.
Thank you, Tessie. Um, I've given this a great deal of thought and and I appreciate everybody's comments. And when I say appreciate them, this is different for Lower Gwinnett Township. And uh, I looked at the American flag, I don't think we can fly another flag. Uh, the POW MIA flag, I don't, we don't fly that one either. Uh, so that's been the practice and I don't think you can fly it on the United States flag. And we have one flag pole here, township building, and most people don't even know where. At least half the township doesn't even know where we are and no less see a flag unless the wind's blowing. So then I talked to our township manager, where where can we have a flag? And and kicked it around and uh right where the old Texaco station used to be. At the corner of the uh Sumney Town and in the Pike. Uh, there's a, there's a uh a field there, right now there's a banner there. Uh, congratulating students uh who graduated from uh high school. So Craig, in his wisdom, uh secured a flag of the appropriate size so everybody could see it. So, everybody drives through that intersection. Everybody in this township at one point and it is the most noticeable location. To put a flag or a banner or anything on any substance. Because members of the LGBT community, they're they're not on the right or the left, they're they're everybody, they're. We have, you know, family members, cousins, uncles, aunts, nephews, uh you know, people in the community. And we're a government of everybody. And I don't think there's anything necessarily political about that flag. You know, the there's Republican organizations, uh the Log Cabin Republicans that are flying under that banner and and there's even. You know, it it you don't have to have unanimity of of thought on this, even the LGBTQ community doesn't agree on everything as you would expect. So I think that's a good location for a banner and Craig, what's the size of this flag uh that you secured?
Uh, five by eight.
Pretty good size. I I'd like to uh make a recommendation, if it's okay with the supervisors. We we do that, we put it right at the uh uh location where the current banner is at the old Texaco site. Are there any thoughts from my supervisors?
I just have a couple of thoughts. Um, many of our surrounding municipalities just taped up the pride flag right underneath the American flag and threw it on up. Amber being one of them, Whitpain being another. Um, I, the way that I recommended it was for us to consider a separate flag pole because of the concerns that I knew some of my fellow su- supervisors had. But there is nothing preventing us from putting the pride flag beneath um the American flag, that's the first thing. Secondly, um, you know, I can, I understand some of the concern, well, I I don't understand, I appreciate some of the concerns that are expressed, I don't agree with them. Um, I think this is about celebrating our community members. Members of our community are a part of the LGBT community and we're ensuring that they feel welcome, that we're inclusive and especially for the youth. That they they know that we're welcoming and inclusive. So I would urge us, you know, on June twenty-second to put up a flag wherever is possible. But ideally, there's nothing preventing us from putting it right underneath the township, the township um American flag.
Mr. Brent, you had a comment, but you were on mute. And you're still on mute.
Am I unmuted?
Yes, I can hear you now, Mr. Ed.
Well, I knew this was going to be uh a split opinion between the supervisors and like I've. I've already stated where I'm at with this, uh I I agree with Kathy that the American flag represents law. Um, and uh, but I can count and um. If there is a a a a flag um to uh. Um, to recognize different organizations, I don't have. I don't have a problem being outvoted, um that has happened a number of times. But I I'm really blown away, Mark, by you and even Craig. Um, mentioning that corner where we have the graduation. Recognition of all the residents for that corner because like you said. That corner has more visibility when the than the American flag, the state flag or the township flag. Um, so that that is very surprising to me, uh that's also a disturbing to me. Uh, but I can count the votes and if the three supervisors uh. Think it's necessary for us to put up a a flag for recognition for not. Uh, just one organization, but a number of organizations, I can count, but we're going to. Have a flag a month, I can tell you that because we're going to have all the other organizations coming to the township to put up their flag. And I, again, go back to Kathy's comments. It all falls under the American flag and. So I said what I said, uh people know how I stand, uh but I'm really shocked. Uh, that a location of of what you mentioned, Mark, and you talked to Craig. Um, wasn't addressed. Uh, that that to me, location is a is another issue other than. Uh, putting up a flag for um, you know, uh. An individual organization that we haven't done in the past, so that's all I have to say.
Thank you, uh thank you, Ed. Um, Neil, uh is there a uh prohibition or concern? Or uh any, any rules that need to be filed about putting a flag underneath the American flag?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay, all right, so um Kath or Tessie, any thoughts?
I think there may be um about sharing a pole with the American flag, I think there may be, I'm not really sure. Because and I and I say that because I put um on my supervisor page, a post on Flag Day. Of the American flag next to the police flag and I got a private message from a resident telling. Informing me that that's not proper, you can't have them flying together and I clarified that they were on separate poles. So there was something there, I don't know if he was in fact telling, you know, what what flag law is, but we might want to look into that. And um Ed, just to to your comments, you you referred to uh the supervisor's feeling that it's necessary. To um fly this flag, I I don't, I don't think it's necessary, as a matter of fact, i- it's not necessary at all. And I'll just reiterate my comments, um especially on that entrance into our township. Um, it, it gives preference to a group, it's identity politics. I I don't agree with it, I think ultimately it's divisive and I don't think we're doing, I I think we again should be emphasizing what we all have in common. As American citizens rather than singling out um one individual group, whatever that group might be. It's not about homophobia, it's not about transphobia, I'm talking at a prin- a principled measure right here, so.
So, so we don't want to put up a banner to celebrate the graduates from the high school?
Um, I think we did, I agree, I don't have any problem with that.
So that, uh you know, to me, this is uh along the same lines, we are celebrating a a group of individuals. We're recognizing their legitimacy, their um, you you know, their uh the past wrongs that have been. Uh committed against them. Um.
Well, I don't have been, okay, all right, we're just gonna have to agree to disagree here.
I I also think that um the location that Mark and Craig have identified uh is acceptable with me. I I I hope by next year, we can have an actual flag pole put on that lot. So that if we, if the township does want to fly different types of flags for important reasons. Not trivial reasons, but important reasons that we would have that opportunity and have a respectful uh location to put them.
Well, I I I might also add that, you know, we have three other parks as well. And we have enough, more people visit the parks than they ever visit the township building, that's for sure. Um, and if the parks are an option, I I'd be open to entertain that as well. Because the parks, we could, we could get a, you know, a a smaller uh flag that's used and. By residents for the most part and we could put them up in the parks, I mean, I don't have a, but the idea here is not to. You know, there's 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 a long history of um people not being accepted for who they are. And if you have any family members who went been through that, um, it can be very damaging. Uh, and the the uh emotional and suicide rate in that community uh is really high. Because because of all all kinds of reasons, right? And and now there's been a tremendous amount of progress uh in that community, in the general public. For acceptance and I think acceptance is the key here and because we're we're a government of everybody. Not just the ones we might not agree with, you know, I read a book recently or a few months ago, it's called Love Your Enemies. It's about how you should make our decisions regardless of what we think of that person or how much animosity there might be. Uh, as if you were to love them or if it's possible, because you'll make a better decision. Uh, it'll be more long-lasting as opposed to a uh knee-jerk and I can't remember the author's last, the first name is Arthur. But uh, it's a great book, uh and it's and it talks about. Social media and the damage it's causing and it's it's covers a lot of, a lot of territory, very good book. But it's about what I'm talking about here more is more is a uh not a political sta- statement, but more is a. Acceptance of who we all are, humanity, so it's a little bit different. I I'm looking at this a little with a different lens, maybe than possibly than some others, so um. I I thought it was a good, good way to acknowledge it and and address our concerns too about the the flag poles. We don't have a policy on flag poles, it it never came up before. So just because we haven't done something doesn't mean we shouldn't do something. Um, and then we need to decide what we want to do on the flag poles and that might take some time. At the same time, if we put the flag up, I don't think it damages anybody. And could help some folks who who may have have some concerns about their own lives, so.
I like that comment on your comments, uh Mark, you and I talked uh privately. Uh, getting everybody's ideas and thinking about what decision, final decision we're going to make. And you had mentioned to me about the parks and uh I thought. You know, I've been around long enough, I can count and I I I figured, well, you know, uh this is going to go against. What I feel and if so, um. You you put up the flag and you had mentioned Penland Woods and something, but what shocked me tonight is uh. The conversation you had with Craig uh to put something on the corner where the Texaco used to be. Because that location, like I previously mentioned. Uh, is a much better location for anything and it would. The American flag is more important than any flag, we all agree with that. And when you start mentioning what goes on that location of the old Texaco, it just blew me away. But I've said enough, I'll be quiet.
Thank you. Any more comments from the supervisors? Okay, I'm gonna open this up to the public, do we have any comments from the public?
Yes, I have Joyce Keller.
Hi, Joyce.
Hi, thank you for having me, I've been listening to this conversation. I'm Joyce Keller, I am on the Board of Supervisors of Whitte- Whitpain Township. I live at ten ninety-eight Morris Road, for your records. We just recently voted a four to one to have the um flag flown. Underneath the American flag at our government building, we did have our solicitors very carefully. It'll be, there are no limitations on what flags can be flown under the American flag. So there is nothing that is standing in the way legally for the pride flag to be flown under the American flag. And there were many great comments that have been said, but really what. Why I pushed for the pride flag to be raised is for our youth. Um, and we can sit here and we can tell, say until we're blue in the face, that everyone is equal. That we, you know, every child should be who they want to be, but they also don't join all of these meetings. And it's important for them to have visual um. Uh, statements throughout their township, I think it's wonderful if you want to put a pride flag in the parks, but you should also put it in the government. On the government flag pole because you're telling the your township, you're telling your your constituents. That we we support the LGBTQ, uh we, when we got into our um positions. At the beginning of the year, there were a lot of people who complained about racism or, you know, things that we had to figure out. And that's why we created the HRC and.
I like to have a point of, point of order for the solicitor, uh the lady that's talking. If she's. if she's a resident and votes at Whitpain Township, I want to hear from people that live in Lower Gwinnett Township. Where do we cross file? I I understand what she's saying. I understand her points of view. But are we opening this dialogue to non-resident members of Lower Gwinnett Township? Unless I misunderstood, I heard that she said she voted. She's on the Whitpain board. So a point of order to our solicitor, where are we with opening dialogue?
If I if it's all right, I I just would like to say that I am, I did vote for it. And I'm here simply to try and show support and try to just express why we feel it is so important to have this. I think it would be very beneficial to your community. So I apologize if for some reason I overstepped my boundaries. But I thought as a supervisor, as somebody who's a leader in our community, we should start, we should represent that.
Thank you, Joyce.
Thank you. I have another comment from just says Richard.
Hi, Richard.
Yes, good evening, everybody. My name is Richard Budakavoli, and I am founder of the Montgomery County LGBT Business Council. I am also, which which also has a office at Ambler Yards located in your township. So I am here to commend Daniel on recommending this. I'd like to say, I think it would be wonderful for you to be part of LGBT history and join Ambler, Kucha Hocken, Whitpain, Lansdale, Hatfield, Upper Gwinnett, Hopper, Jacobtown, Springfield, Montgomery Township, Abington, Sheltonham, Plymouth, East Norridon, West Norridon, to name a few. Also, if I can, as the founder of the Montgomery County LGBT Business Council, I've attended many conferences that invite large corporations such as, there's so many, I can't even name them all. But when when large companies go to look for new locations, one of the things they do is to see if a township has passed a nondiscrimination ordinance and also to see if they are welcoming communities. By raising the flag in Lower Gwinnett, you are showing that you are a welcome community and business is welcome to all. That includes entrepreneurs who want to come into your township and start a business, as well as patrons who want to patronize those businesses that might be LGBT. One of the things I noticed that Lower Gwinnett Township has not done yet has been that they haven't introduced a nondiscrimination ordinance like Lansdale, like Ambler, like North Wales, which by the way, left out North Wales. North Wales did raise a pride flag, like White Marsh, like Hatfield, like Lansdale. It's interesting how I, as a member of the LGBT community, born and raised in Ambler, can travel through Ambler. I can go to, I can.
When does it stop?
I can pass.
When does it stop?
I can pass.
You don't even live in Lower Gwinnett. When do we open up these meetings to the world? How about the state and the federal government? We might as well be here all night.
So I have an office in Lower Gwinnett. The Montgomery County LGBT Business Council has an office in Ambler Yards. So thank you for letting a business, somebody who has business that does business in Lower Gwinnett, speak. But my point is that I can be protected in Ambler and Lansdale and the surrounding areas, but drive through Lower Gwinnett and suddenly I am no longer protected. So I want this board, as somebody who does business in Lower Gwinnett, to consider two things. One, the initiation of and drafting of a nondiscrimination ordinance. Number two, to raise that pride flag. Pride flags, we have a record number of pride flags that were raised this year. Montgomery County has raised its pride flag for the third year with the courthouse. And not only this year, they raised 17 flags, Montgomery County itself. Seven of them in at their courthouses and annexes and 10 alone on parks and trails. So I commend the Montgomery County Commissioners for doing that. All in total, we have over 30 pride flags were raised in Montgomery County. And they're doing it for the kids this year. LGBT youth suicide is at an all time high. Kids are being bullied in their schools. Parents are having a difficult time accepting this. So by raising a flag, you're assuring parents that you have their support, that they don't feel left out. Because many parents would think, what will the neighbors think? What will my family think? What what will other people think in our community? So by raising the flag, you show support. And when when a kid drives by that flag, they feel safe. And when a parent tries by that flag, they think, well, I have the support of my municipality to help deal with my with my child who is in crisis. Again, it's good for business. Businesses, we have something called the Equality Maps.
Yeah, so Richard, I just want to assure you that you're welcomed in Lower Gwinnett Township and you are protected in Lower Gwinnett Township. There are state laws and common law that exist that are overwhelmingly in your favor of protection.
You are mistaken. I am not protected by state laws. I can be evicted.
Okay, well, this is not the venue to be debating that at this point. But again, you are welcomed here. And the fact that we may not have a flag does not mean that we're not inclusive or or welcoming.
In Lower Gwinnett. My point is that if you look at, there is.
Your point. You've made your point. When do you stop?
If I could just finish, I will end it here.
If you if you look at the movement. You made your point. What else do you want to say? You want to bring in the rest of this state?
If you look at the Movement Advancement Project, they list all the equality maps. Okay? The Movement Advancement click on Pennsylvania. Businesses like Merrill Lynch and large corporations apps to decide where they want to move to and open up.
Mark, enough is enough, Mark.
Richard, Richard, you've made your point about businesses. I understand.
Thank you. Thank you.
I understand. You've made your point. And I did ask Neil to take a look at our ordinances to make sure we don't discriminate. And and we're look, we're change is hard. Change is very hard. Everybody wants the other person to change. But thank you for your comments. I have another comment from Deborah Schaefer. Hey, Deborah.
Thank you, Craig. I have a question for Mr. Brandt. And with all due respect, I'm wondering why you had such a strong reaction to the suggestion that a banner, which would not be permanent, would be put at the corner of Penlin Pike and Sumney Town. You kept saying visibility and you said to Mark that blew you. What is the problem with that, Mr. Brandt?
I don't have a problem with any organization in the United States that exists. I have a pro not, I don't have a problem. I'm in favor of what I said earlier. The American flag, the state flag and Lower Gwinnett flag have been representing all of Lower Gwinnett, all of the communities inclusive. What I'm afraid that will happen, and I trust me, I'm I'm not anti this cause at all. I am thinking that every month, we're going to have a different flag representing all the interests and concerns about all the residents. And I guarantee you, after 12 reaches, then how do you address the 13th and 14th interest that that can't raise the flag because we already have it designated for another group? That's that's I'm not, I'm opposed to raising another flag. But I knew going into this meeting tonight that there was a strong possibility that I would be outvoted three to two, and that has happened before. So if that happens, fine. What I was shocked about was the conversation Mark had with her manager about starting to put that flag or any flag on the corner where we don't have the American flag to move, to put something there now. That's the the thing that shocked me tonight. It's not that there's going to be a three to two vote, obvious three to two vote to fly that flag. That's fine. I don't I don't have a problem with that. But to have our chairman have a conversation with her manager about putting it. I'm answering your question and I'm finishing. I'm finishing your question. You asked me why I was so concerned. And I I answered that I I I was surprised our manager and our chairperson talked about that corner.
What you I I specifically asked you about about visibility. And what is your problem with that corner being so visible?
I'm not opposed to that corner being so visible. If you're going to address that corner, you put the American flag there first, you put the state flag there second, you put the township flag there third, and any other flag that the Board of Supervisors want to put up, then put it there also. But I don't want a a third or fourth identity flag to be put there and not the American flag, not the state flag, and not the township flag.
Mr. Brandt, just for clarification, right next door at the Veterans Park are all three flags that you just mentioned.
I have another comment from Jenny Brooks.
Okay, Jenny.
This is Paul Brooks. Jenny Brooks. We're residents of Lower Gwinnett Township. I just want to say for the record, I feel I'm being extraordinarily poorly represented by Mr. Brandt. I can't even believe that the disposition he's shown throughout this meeting, it's totally unacceptable and unprofessional and unbecoming of a township supervisor. And I also want to say that I strongly, strongly support flying the LGBTQ flag anywhere we see fit, including on a government flag pole. I think it's extraordinarily important, like was said earlier in the meeting, that young people understand that we are inclusive. And just for the record as well, this meeting feels extremely uninclusive and unwelcoming. So if this is any reflection of what it's like to live in the township, what I don't understand, I'm I'm kind of appalled at the like sort of party line down the line. We don't agree with it, but we do. I just feel like your hearts are not in the right place when you just summarily reject the idea of celebrating the LGBTQ community. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Are there any more comments? I have another comment from David Frank.
David.
Thank you, Mr. McNally and Mr. Gray. I just want to speak and agree with the speakers who agree with the notion that we should be flying the pride flag in Lower Gwinnett Township. Either location would would be suitable, I think. It's been discussed. I don't have a sense that this would be a divisive move. And, you know, if groups felt that the flags that we have existing now were inclusive, then we wouldn't be talking about this to begin with. This is a would signal a large portion of our community that they're welcome and that we are tolerant and accepting of others that may or may not be the same as us. And the points that were made by non-Lower Gwinnett residents, I think, are very valid and should be taken into consideration as well. That's all I had to say.
Thank you, David. Are there any more hands up, Craig? I don't see any more hands up at this time.
Oh, I don't know how to put my hand.
If I could say one more thing, Richard Budakavoli, and I promise I will be brief. To the gentleman on the Board of Commissioners who fears a slew of flags being raised, I suggest you reach out to your local borough managers and Ambler and other municipalities. They will tell you they do not get a slew of other people asking to raise flags. And secondly, just last month, Ambler Yards had a pride festival there. And it would have been really nice to know that LGBT people that were on that property felt safe and protected with a nondiscrimination ordinance, just in case anything might have happened. Although that is private property. And I was responsible for helping Ambler Yards draft their nondiscrimination ordinance, which protects people of the LGBT community and other minority minority communities. So I just wanted to mention that you would be supporting folks, businesses, employees, municipalities, students all over Lower Gwinnett and and joining in with your sister and brother municipalities.
Thank you, Richard. Thank you very much. Joan, you had a you had a comment you'd like to make?
Yes, I did. I don't know how to put my wave my hand on Zoom. But you know, I live in Lower Gwinnett, a block and a half outside of Ambler Borough, which I always considered kind of my 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 town. And to see them raise, you know, the rainbow flag in Lower Gwinnett. And I saw, and not Lower Gwinnett, no, excuse me, Upper Gwinnett. Upper Dublin. Is that what it was? Anyway, and there were families, parents with their young children. And and it was a celebration. But I mean, how hard is that to do? How hard is that to do? So it's 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 a hard thing to think that that people would squash any. I have been fighting for gay rights all my life. I am 67 years old. And it was not pretty. Come on. Raise some colors. What the hell? That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Joan. Is there any more hands up, Craig? I do not see any hands up at this time. Okay, I would like to make a motion to put the LGBTQ flag on the corner of the old Texaco property. And I'd like everybody's consent to that. Do I have a do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Tessie, you're on mute.
Aye.
Okay, Kathleen?
Aye.
Ed?
I'd like to preface this vote with a comment, and that is after hearing the comments tonight and having somebody in my family that will be very happy to see that flag flown. Your motion, Mark, was not just to fly fly the flag, but where to put it. In turn, I would vote in favor of flying the flag after hearing the arguments and how much it means to a number of people. But I would say no as for until the board addresses and confirms to move all the flags to the site that you mentioned. So I would say no. So I would say no on the motion, but I preface it is that if it was a different location where the American flag is now uh, or whatever, but to have it flown on that corner without the American flag, without the state flag and the county flag, I would be opposed. If you amend your motion to say you're going to put all the flags there, then I would say yes.
Mr. Brandt, right across the street, right across the road, Penland Pike, mere yards from each other, is the United States flag, the township flag? And I'm not sure what the third flag is because I can't see it clearly when I drive by, but is it the county flag? The county or the state? Yeah, the state.
It's the-
So we have the state, the, the, the United States of America and the township flag, three flag poles under the Lower Guinean Township little rock display, yards away from that flag. Are you trying to say that you would like the pride flag to be raised in that area at Veterans Park?
I would be in favor of that, yes. I would not be in-
On what flag, on what flag pole, Mr. Brandt? Let's just walk through the line of, of question. What flag pole?
The majority of what I'm hearing tonight is that uh, you, you want to put an additional flag. Well, I know you answered the question. You wanted me to give you an answer. I'm trying to give you an answer. Okay, number one, from what I've heard tonight, I'm not opposed to flying the flag now. All right, now you're asking me, where, where do I, it's another question.
You said you wanted all three things. All three things are present merely yards away. So because we don't have the additional flag pole, I think Mr. Mr. Gray was recommending that we do it in the, the township's property right across the street of Penland Pike. If you're saying that you want those other flags present, my question to you is merely, what flag pole do you want the pride flag to be on?
Well, that's a decision the board would have to make. Either we-
I'm just asking you-
You're asking me a question I'm trying to answer. Either we put up another flag or we put it below one of the other flags. What I-
I'm just asking you which one.
I haven't given that any thought, but if the, if the majority of the Board of Supervisors say it should go below the American flag, then I'm not opposed to putting up a pride flag. And you're asking me what flag? Why I haven't given that any thought. It's, uh, what I've heard tonight is I don't want to give the residents of Lower Guinean uh, that I am opposed to the flag. I was shocked that was, that this is something new that we've ever addressed and times have changed and I think there's a need for it. So you're asking me a question? I, I don't know. I didn't give it any thought, but whatever the majority of the board feels it should go, I will go with it. Well, I had a, a motion. I had a second, right? Uh, and your answer is unclear to me, Mr. Brandt, Ed. Well, I, I voted for it. And the question from the, from Danielle was where do you put it? Well, that's, that's another question.
The reason I'm asking you the question is I can, we can make another motion, Mr. Brandt. If, if you're more inclined to have it underneath the township flag, the United States flag or the state flag or the county flag, I'm not sure what the third flag is. We can make another motion right now. Right now we have three to two, well, four to, four to one to put it at the Texaco because you voted in favor of it.
No, I voted in favor of, not to Texaco. I voted in favor of putting it with the current flags.
Okay, so it's, so it's three to two to put it at Texaco currently.
Yes, and, and I'm opposed to that, but I'm not opposed to the flag, is what my, my point was.
So the only reason why I'm asking you these questions is to see if there's a more amicable motion so that you can be included as, as part of supporting the idea of, of the pride flag being-
Well, I'm also trying to convince the, the three of you to, to put the, uh, put the pride, pride flag where the other flags are. If, if you suggest that is, to put underneath the American flag, fine. Or the state flag or the township flag, fine. But I am opposed to putting another flag pole on an area where the American flag isn't, it, where the American flag uh, does not fly on that corner. Neither does the state flag or the township flag. I think the pride flag should go with all the other flags. Okay, so I'm going to make a motion.
Can I just clarify something, Mr. Chairman, that-
Sure.
That position is going to be located where the banner is. We're not putting a flag pole there. It's just going to be replacing the graduation banner there. We're not installing a new flag pole.
Well, that's, that wasn't clear to me. Um, I didn't hear your explanation about that until now. So the, that whole corner being addressed, uh, see, that's new to me. Uh, I am in favor of what I've heard tonight. Uh, and like I mentioned to you, I have family members that are affected with this and I do not, I, I'm not opposed to that, that flag. Uh, and if, from what I've heard tonight, I'm in favor of putting it up. But all of a sudden now, it's going to go someplace other than the other flags. So, Mr. Brandt, we're back with the motion, not to, to put it on the corner, the old Texaco. It's a ban, as a banner. We're not erecting a new flag pole there. We would, we don't have the time to do that anyway. Yep, that, that would be a lengthy process. Um, what my motion is right now is to erect the banner as a banner, the, the rainbow flag on that corner. All right, well, I would vote for that. Thank you. So we have, we have four guesses. Kath?
Oh, I already voted.
Okay. All right, so the motion passes four to one uh, to place the uh, LGBTQ flag, the rainbow flag on the corner as a banner.
Mr. Mr. Chairman, I don't think you included it in part of your motion how long we were going to put the banner up.
Um, well, we're almost out a month. Today's the 22nd. Um, so you have a recommendation?
Have him make a motion that we fly, fly the, or allow the banner to be displayed until July 22nd.
So we get four weeks out of it. Yeah, that would be a second motion. So the first motion passed and second motion is to fly it for four weeks.
A second that.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, that's Kath?
Aye. Have to be consistent here, Chairman.
Okay, so that's four to, four to one. So it'll fly, it'll, it'll, the banner will be there for four weeks.
And can, we will share information with the public as far as when that will take place, when it will be erected?
Correct. It, it is supposed to arrive tomorrow.
Okay.
Hmm. I don't know it was ordered. I don't know it was ordered.
Thank the Board of Supervisors for supporting this motion. Thank you Danielle for bringing it to our attention and thank you Mark and Craig for finding a way to display the flag. Uh, that's in a very prominent position. Uh, and um, it's much appreciated. Thank you.
And I'd like to reiterate that Lower Guinean Township has and always will be welcoming to all of our citizens and residents regardless of what flags or banners are raised.
Thank you. And just so I put, want to put a finer point on this. We need to have a policy. We, we, we don't have a policy. Uh, we need to talk about what that is, how that would look. Uh, because I would, I, I, I think it would be healthy as a township for us to do that. So, so I, I, I think Craig, we're going to have to get with Neil and, and work out the details on this and make some proposals to the board. Oh, okay. Now that we've said all of that, uh, we have a section called Public Comments for everything, everything that wasn't on the agenda tonight. So does anybody in the public have any comments?
Yes, I know um, Carmina Taylor had called me earlier today to inform me and now her hands up, so.
Thank you.
Carmina, you are on. Oh, you're muted. Oh, there you are.
So before I begin, I do want to preface this that I'm no longer a resident of Lower Guinean. Um, but I um, am an invested stakeholder in the community. So before I preface the context, um, is it okay for me to speak? I'm asking the five Board of Supervisors if it's okay for me to speak.
Go, go ahead, Carmina.
Go ahead.
Okay, so for the purposes of my comment, I just want to say, for people that don't know me, my grandfather was the uh, Second Baptist Preacher uh, in Penland. My mom was a longtime activist. I have lived the majority of my life in Lower Guinean. As such, I am, last year, you guys approved of, of a community conversation that involved Wissahickin School students. And I followed the procedures, the processes and all of the requirements to attain a permit. I um, altered the original intent of the event based on recommendations from, I guess, the officials in Lower Guinean. I wanted to have a walk on Penambler Road. I found that I couldn't do it. I wanted to have a walk in Penland and um, I compromised because at the time be, with the height of COVID and just respecting other people's opinions of why we couldn't have a walk in Penland, I didn't do it. I want to bring up the fact, and in listening to all of you today, um, you guys are the governing body of your township. And as such, me growing up, I respected that. And Mr. Brandt knows I've always respected him. And I have always looked towards this township for law, for, for decency and order. And I pride myself in always telling people that I grew up in a Republican township, but we all got along because everyone respected each other um, as, as people. So I just want to share that I'm very disappointed that there was um, an event that happened in Penland on Memorial Day. And um, clearly, the Parks and Recreation Board members and, and the liaisons from the Board of Supervisors know that um, there was no permit. And when I looked over your policies and I looked over the rules and regulations, um, I recognized that there was eight out of 16 violations of your policy that were not adhered to. And when I looked at the safety deposit um, requirements when you get a permit, all of the top five requirements were not followed for that event that happened um, on May 31st. And I just personally feel, because I know between my family having reunions and events at Penland Woods and potentially having more events in your facilities, um, that if I respect the boundaries and the rules and regulations, I feel that everybody should. And if they don't, I feel that there should be consequences. And I know for a fact that if I had done anything wrong, anything out of order, anything disrespectful, if I didn't follow your rules and regulations, I would have been talked about, or, or I don't know if you would have fined me or whatever, but the point is is that you guys have to do something about moving forward in terms of how people have to respect the boundaries and the rules and regulations that you have established. If you don't, you will be disregarded. And if not, people will get the feeling that they can do whatever. I have never done that. My mom has never done that. My son has never done that. And I just want to put it on for the record that that situation should be dealt with. And, and I just, I wanted some dialogue if possible, but I just want to point out those facts. And so um, I just want to reiterate that I'm very disappointed that there was something that blatantly was done and not adhered to. I know there haven't been any imposed consequences to that. Thank you.
Hey, Carmina.
Thank you, Carmina.
Yes, Danielle.
I just wanted to share some insight. Um, me and Tessie serve on the Park and Rec Board and the individual who did put on the event did come to the Park and Rec public meeting and share with us her concerns as well as sharing with us what took place. And it seemed like it was a lot of levels of miscommunication. But most importantly, I think what we learned from the exchange and the dialogue was that because the individual did not request exclusive use of the park, meaning they were not excluding anyone from participating, whether it be baseball families, whether it be neighbors, whether it be people from wherever, because she did not request exclusive use, she did not need a permit. Um, and we do not have a large use ordinance in our township, something that we, that we will be bringing to the entire board shortly. Um, but because we lack that large use ordinance or permit request, she actually did not require a permit. She did communicate with the Park and Rec Director. Her plans that were changed because of the rain that weekend. Um, so we weren't fully aware that the event was taking place and it was not communicated at all with the Board of Supervisors. We did not become aware of it until after the event. But through that conversation at the Park and Rec public meeting, we were able to see the breakdown in communication. We're able to see the confusion as, as to if a permit was needed or not needed. And we were also able to see that this was an event for the community and the community as a whole had been notified um, door to door with flyers. Um, so this is, that was what was communicated to us in that public meeting and, and that's what we will, what we have gone back and will be sharing with the remainder of the board as we move forward. But I just wanted to clarify those points that we made clear at that meeting.
So, so Danielle, I respect you as well. So here's the situation. Now I see it. I was there on that Monday and that road was completely blocked and people had a separate way of coming. It had to come into that area in a separate way. And so I did not see Lower Guinean Police there. Um, I saw a fire truck or some red truck. I mean, I really wasn't trying to pay attention like that. But here's the point, right? I totally compromised with all, I looked over the email chain. I had about seven different emails that entailed the final ask in the permit for our event last week. Ours was open to the public and listen, you guys waived the fees. But the point is, I still followed rules. If you were to still look over that sheet just as a guideline, there were things that were not followed. A road was blocked. And I just think that, and, and to, to to just say because she opened it up to the public and, and I'm aware of the things that she said in your meeting, I just want you to know that most of it is not, well, I just think that if you do find a policy or figure out how to fix that, that's fine. But you still have to acknowledge that there was something really big that was done. Like for instance, one of your regulations says no moon bounces, right? No, it's prohibited.
On, on township property, it was in the street. I'm not negating any of the concerns that you shared. What we found is we found, we found the loopholes that were, I guess, exploited or maybe magnified by the event, which then requires us to go back and tighten up some of our processes as well, as well as our communication. And I don't discount any of the concerns that, that you're addressing. I don't, Lower Guinean Police was not there. Whitpain Police was, the Wissahickin Fire Company was, the Ambler EMS Service was, in addition to Ambler providing the barricades for the event. So I'm clear.
Why would that happen? Because I couldn't have my walk on Penambler Road because it intersected with different police departments. And I, I was discouraged, excuse me. I was discouraged. I need you to, Danielle, specifically, okay? I need you to be mindful of the belligerence. Okay? And I'm concerned about blatant belligerence versus someone that blatantly respects the process. And that and-
You're talking about on, on the behalf of the resident?
Absolutely. And I did call the neighbors on that street and they did not get that and they did not get communication. And the reason why they didn't communicate, complain or whatever is because they don't want hassle. And all I'm saying to you is, I'm still a stakeholder. I have family that still lives there. I'm an educational advocate at Wissahickin. I still do uh, help families in that community. And I'm still probably going to have something there, whether it's non-resident or partnered with a resident. I just think that however you move forward with this, what happened, it has to be clear and it has to be fair. And it has to appear fair. Because right now, I don't feel that way. And you clarified one aspect, but and, and you're using the word loopholes. Imagine if Carmina used a loophole for anything. That's, that's what I know.
And I'm not advocating for that use, but I appreciate you bringing that perspective to us because it, you know, like I said, we only had one individual bring one perspective to the Park and Rec um, committee meeting. So I appreciate you sharing your perspective. And it, it gives us, I guess, um, greater strength in, in going back- And it, it gives us, I guess, um, greater strength in, in going back and looking over our ordinances and our statute as, as well as permit process.
And Mr. Brand, I see your body language. And let me tell you something. You are a fine young, young gentleman. Because you have more vim and vigor today than you did twenty years ago. How about that? And I respect you greatly, right? But your body language has been a bit tart tonight. And, and I have adored you since I was a child. And this wasn't your finest hour because this doesn't reflect the good man that you are. And it's messed up that it's virtual, but I have seen you my whole entire life. I have.
I appreciate your comments.
I just need you to know that regardless of tonight, I'm gonna see you again, and I'm gonna hug you, and I'm gonna say you're awesome man.
I have listened to, I have listened to the residents. I did change my vote on the banner. And um, so.
But even the way I'm talking, but I'm gonna shut up. I thank you guys very much um, for allowing me to speak. And I just, you know, I wanted to go into my family history for people that don't know me. But I still am a part of that community. And my grandfather and my mom and my uncle was on your planning commission. My cousin's still living in your township, and I still participate in, in that community. And I invest. And I'm trying to make things better for people that are disengaged. So I don't physically live there anymore. Thank God, because I'm an empty nester. I downsized. But I still love this community. And, and one of the things, Mr. Brand, that you can take pride in is that again, when you led that government, no one felt like it was a partisan government. That is your legacy.
Thank you.
You're an outstanding gentleman, and, and you have to keep that going. Because times have changed, but the way that you always carried yourself, we, as black folks, we didn't feel any different because you didn't look at us as black folks or Democrats. You looked at us as people that you serve. And your tenure there, I want you to leave that feeling. I want you to leave that the best of you. And that is the best of you. That's all I have to say. Sorry.
Hey, Carmina, thank you very much. Greg? Any more hands up?
I am not seeing any more hands up, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Okay, on to the manager's report.
Um, yes, uh, just uh, I'll keep it short. Township offices will be closed on July fifth, Monday. But the Republic Trash Service will move on as normal. Uh, so they will not be off on Monday. They will be collecting Monday and Thursday as normal. So there will be no interruption in trash service.
Thank you very much, Greg.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, final comments from the supervisors, Mr. Brand.
Uh, yes, I, uh, I want to move on to something else on the record. Um, I, I addressed these comments to Jim Hirsch, uh, to Paul Kenny. Uh, having uh, lived at the Meadows across from the high school for twenty-one years. Um, and knowing the residents here, uh, which composed of about a hundred and sixty to a hundred and seventy-five people. I can tell you that uh, there has been a number of comments to me uh, from the residents uh, of two issues. One, uh, one, uh, Houston Road was repaved. Uh, the speed bumps um, are not back at the same heights that they were before. And so consequently, the speeding, especially on non-school hours uh, has escalated. Um, and I don't know why, uh, Jim, when that was done, um, that the, the heist of those speed bumps were decreased rather than maintained the way they were. Number one. Number two, I had talked to you about the curbing that has decreased also on that road over the years. Uh, you're lucky if you have two inches of curbing there. And with the number of students, parents, and the traffic on that road, uh, the curbing is way below standard. Uh, as for the chief, I had mentioned to the chief about the speeding, especially on weekends. Um, Friday nights, Saturdays, and now with, uh, of course, motorcycles and so forth. It's just out of hand. So, uh, I I respect the two gentlemen that I refer to highly on what they do, uh, and how they serve the township. But uh, I, we have a, a problem there on Houston Road. And uh, because of the speed, I know the, the chief, he's um, because of the number of policemen we have, and the, he, he just can't sit anybody on Houston Road to uh, do a speed trap or anything like that. Uh, but I wanted to point out some things to Jim Hirsch. And also uh, point out uh, to the chief about the problems on Houston Road. And, and uh, with that said, I I, uh, i-if I've given anybody the uh, the impression that I uh, was not uh, courteous or understanding. And in reference to the discussion we uh, had about the banner, I apologize to the public for that. Uh, but I did listen to you, and I changed my vote after listening to the discussion. That's all I have to say, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Brand. Kath?
Thank you. I just want to bring to everybody's attention that the Lower Gwinnett Summer Concert Series kicked off last Wednesday, and I believe we have four or five additional ones in the next consecutive Wednesday, Wednesdays at Oxford Park, seven to eight. Um, tomorrow's gonna be a beautiful night. Bring out your chair, enjoy it, and enjoy the other ones. Um, and I'm also hoping that this continued wonderful participation with the, this participation will continue as we move back to um, pre-pandemic logistics at the Township Building. Um, looks like we're gonna be able to accommodate more people through Zoom, and I hope that um, this act of participation continues. It's been great. Thank you, and happy Fourth of July in advance to everybody.
Thank you, Kathleen. Uh, Danielle? You're unmuted.
Yes, I did realize that. I guess I just want to thank my fellow supervisors um, and residents that came out to speak on um, I guess advocating for inclusivity and equity. I think that that's the most important thing that we all as, as supervisors consider that we're governing now for all. And, and that is the most important thing. And all includes everywhere, everyone in our community.
Thank you, Danielle. Tessie?
Yes, thank you. Um, we're, we're really uh, running late, so I don't want to dwell on this too much, but I I want to raise a, a question about why uh, we supervisors are not getting routine updates from all of the committees uh, that have been uh, in action. Uh, specifically, I'm thinking about the Communication Committee. But there are other committees that don't give regular updates uh, to the Board of Supervisors. And so um, I'd like to know where we stand on the actions of the uh, Communication Survey. And I'd like to know where some other actions stand, like uh, considerations of building a firehouse. Uh, other considerations. So I feel like our whole effort to increase communication uh, is falling short. And uh, you know, our one success is having this Zoom meeting, which is really a byproduct of a disaster. But it's taught us how to communicate better with the uh, with the residents uh, in at least one way. Uh, so I, I'd like for us to have some kind of a um, policy uh, that we find out what's going on uh, in a, a timely way. Not only from, uh, for example, the, you know, we get really detailed records from the ambulance and the fire companies, but I don't see any updates from the police uh, force. You know, what, what is the police log and why do we never discuss that? Uh, so just a, a proposal to, and maybe not a proposal tonight, but a thought to how can we uh, better communicate and keep people, including the supervisors, informed uh, better as to what's going on in the, in the township, and particularly at the Township Building. So I, I'd like to put that out there.
Well, Tessie, I, I don't know what you're missing. So um, as far as I am aware, um, every time we have a meeting like BNC or uh, EAC or Planning, there, there's always a um, minutes, Greg, is that correct? As far as I know, I see them.
Correct. Anything that's going on is uh, put in the manager's report on a weekly basis.
Right.
So my understanding is that there is a Communication Committee, and you're head of it. And I've not seen any update from that committee.
The, the communication, the, the, we decided as a group to execute many of the recommendations that came out of the survey. And we are doing that. And one of those is the uh, Comprehensive Plan Automation and the Citizen Report Tracker. And both of those have taken some time, a great deal of time to do, and both of those are ready to go live shortly. We're going to uh, put the uh, Communications Tool for Citizens' Comments or Concerns uh, into beta test, I'm hoping in a week, maybe not, maybe the following week. So we can test it internally before we put it out to the general public. And the same thing goes for the uh, Comprehensive Plan Tool. So uh, we can't focus on everything all at once. But those two in particular that came out of the Communication Survey uh, are going online shortly. In addition to that, the monthly um, email, excuse me, the email blast and the uh, you know, monthly uh, reports that we used to do uh, in print form twice a year. They're now in process, and Greg mentioned those as well. So, so we may not have a immediate report on follow-up actions, but the tools are now coming online. So it's not like there's nothing there. And I'm pretty sure those, those uh, reports on the uh, on, on the Comprehensive Plan was, that was in your.
It was BNC.
BNC Minutes.
BNC Minutes. So we're bringing those online. So um, and tho, and those were printed, I mean, published uh, to the supervisor, uh, so internally. So those things are actually, implementation is actually happening. And um, from the Communications Committee point of view. So we had the survey, now it's time to do things, and we've been doing them. As far as the police is concerned, we used to get a log uh, report. And I thought I saw Chief Kenny on earlier. We can ask him. Uh, we can get that published again. I mean, I don't think there is a reason for it not to happen. Uh, but we used to get it, and I don't remember when exactly we stopped it. Or was stopped, but we can ask the chief to do it again. It's not a problem, right? So the stuff is there. It's just volume, lots, lots of reports. Uh, what was your manager report this past week, Greg? How long was it?
Uh, I didn't notice. It's probably a hundred and some odd pages.
Yeah, so there's a lot, a lot of detail, and it's
That doesn't, that doesn't address the point as to clear updates. And so I wouldn't be raising this point if I had all this information at my fingertips or uh, you know, right now, you've just given me an update that I, I had no idea what was going on. And just because you know, doesn't mean that everybody else knows. So.
But it's in, it's in the reports. It's in, it's in the reports. So I, I'm saying, yes, it's hundreds of pages.
I'm telling you that it is not clear uh, at times, and that uh, it may be in the reports, but it is not in a clear way to me. And I'm not criticizing individuals for not um, writing reports. But what I'm concerned about is that we haven't improved our communication either within or without. There, there are multiple times, and I don't, you know, the hour is getting late. I don't want to go into all the examples, but there are many times we raise issues, and then they just don't, they seem to go off in space. Uh, they don't get resolved. Um, one example is the issue of uh, clearing snow on the walking tracks. We were supposed to get a quote for how much that was gonna cost, and then we were gonna follow up. Well, that was a citizen concern, and I've never seen a quote. I've never heard a follow-up on that. Um, we asked that the uh, engineers take a look at the wall in Penland Park uh, to see what could be done. I, I've not seen an update from that. Um, so there, you know, I don't want to go into all the list of things that are on my mind. But um, I, I think we're falling short on our communication. And uh, so I want us to think about that a little more carefully and find out why. And how can we get to the root of it and make sure that communication is more available going forward?
Thank you for your comments, Tessie. Uh, thank you, everybody, for attending. It's been a long meeting tonight. I think it was a very meaningful meeting. We had a lot accomplished, at least I think we did. Um, this meeting is adjourned.
Good night, everybody.
Night.
All right, have a good night.
Good night.